Yep, we'll go ahead and do a real call.
Commissioner Coats.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicholas. Chairman North.
Here. Mike, would you mind coming up and leading us in a word of prayer?
Commissioners, thanks a ton for the opportunity to be here with you today. Just say a prayer for you. Lord God, thank you so much for today. And in praying for this commission, I just acknowledge that you're God and you're God in heaven, and that all wisdom and authority belongs to you and that you've entrusted these men with this. I just say thank you so much. And you say that if any of us needs wisdom to ask, and I would imagine that the list in front of these men today requires a great deal of wisdom. And so, Lord, I just ask for your divine wisdom for these men as they make decisions that are going to impact people's lives. Lord, I ask for protection over their lives. I can't imagine what the burden is to sit in their seats. They have a sway of public opinion that just, it doesn't stay in this room. It walks out of this room with them. So, Lord, I pray for peace over their minds when they set this work down today. And that persuasion can come through power. It can come through people's opinions. Keep them free from that burden, Lord. And, man, I pray of protection over them and their family, that they would just be able to experience your peace. And for all the issues before them, Lord, I just want to say thanks for answering. And I want to say thanks for loving the people of Wyoming. And, Lord, I thank you for how you'll give answers to bless those people and bless us people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Lisa, you're up.
So I think you all know Chris Mullen. He's the president, the current president of the library board. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. And as you know, Commissioner Coats is the current liaison to the library from this commission. And he recently asked me to address the answer to this question to the entire commission. So I'm going to be providing some information that will give more background to the slides, but I would invite you to look at the slides. I'm not going to be reading them, so I want you to make sure you see that information. Okay, so is there a clicker for this? So why does a library cost more than other departments? I wish technology, I wish every one of was made the same. That doesn't happen. So it is a fair question, and it's really a very reasonable question. So as you can see, my short answer is that the library serves more people for more hours in more places than almost any other county department. Of course, that would be excluding our sheriff's department. So for nine months out of the year, the library is open seven days a week. The remaining three months were open six days a week. This is not true for most other county departments. And on the days that we are open, we operate for longer hours in order to accommodate the public. And boy, do we accommodate the public. In the last two years, we have had more than 575,000 in-person visits. And this past year alone, we circulated over 380,000 items to the Natrona County residents. As you can see on this slide, the main library is open for about 60 hours a week for most of the year. In fact, in any year, the main branch of the Casper Library is open about 40% more than most other county departments. And then we add in the additional hours of having the branch in Edgerton. And for all those days and all those hours that we open, we use a four-three-two-one approach to staffing inside the building. So four, we have four public service floors. And three, as we staff those public service areas, we consider three factors. Safety, the safety of patrons and staff. Service, the ability to provide customer service to the patrons that they need. And the reality that we need to supervise behaviors of those persons in the building. Two, to accomplish this, we need a minimum of two staff members on each of those service floors. And keep in mind that with the fact that we are open for 10 hours most days, that means we have multiple shifts. And of course, one, we have one contract for private security. And through that, we have two guards on duty almost every hour that we're open. And this is to ensure the safety for the public and our staff members. In addition to staffing at the libraries, my team also provides services out in the community. This is called outreach. We have teams that go into the schools, daycares, senior resident and senior daycare day centers. They attend community events, and we even send materials to patrons who are homebound. This is all in an effort to provide outstanding customer service. 91% of our current fiscal year allocation from the county goes directly to staff expenses. 91%. But it takes a lot more than that than just staff to run my department. And I only have 9% of that county allocation remaining to cover all of the other expenses. Because the library operates in a separate building, we incur expenses that I expect most other county departments don't have to include in their budgets. And as you can see on this slide, there's a lot of those other expenses. So that's everything from utilities and heating to supplies, parking lot upkeep. The big ticket items, of course, we run through Garrett, and that does not come out of our budget, but the day-to-day operations does come from us, from our budget. And it all costs money, as you know better than anybody else. Everything costs money. Every light turned on, every chair pulled out, every document notarized, every carpet vacuumed, every restroom cleaned, every aspect of IT, our phone systems, it all comes out of our county allocation operating budget. But what you don't see in this presentation is any mention of programming expenses, because none of that is paid for with county dollars. Those expenses are paid for through grants and donations. Our foundation, our Friends of the Library, and private donors support those expenses. The state of Wyoming requires every county to have a public library. Why? Likely so that they can guarantee access to information, to support education and literacy, which we know from data reduces incarceration and greatly improves community and society, to improve equity by offering services at no additional cost, and to serve as a community hub to provide technology, community engagement, and connections, not to mention that livability factor that businesses seeking to come into our communities are often looking for. By using the resources at the library, technology, print materials, personalized assistance, data, so much more, residents are empowered to improve their lives and shape their futures. We are informal educators, and as such, we strengthen skills, help build knowledge, and provide opportunities, ultimately supporting the economic and social well-being of the entire community. So yes, the library's budget is larger than most departments. But with the return of $4.86 for every county dollar invested, I would say your constituents are telling you it's worth it. So that, I think, I hope, answers that question, Commissioner Coats. And I appreciate the opportunity to come to share with you.
Lisa, since we still have a few minutes left.
Okay.
That's not usually what happens.
I know, right?
What's new at the library?
Oh, my goodness. Well, a couple of things. One, I'm going to do like a bad news, good news thing. Bad news, that lift that provides access to mobility impaired individuals getting to the mezzanine, which is our teen zone, we have some staff areas there, excuse me, staff areas there for our adult services department and the administrative wing, so for the public wanting to attend a board meeting, let's say. That lift has died its last death. Commissioner Coats is shaking his head yes, because I made him go out and look at it. In fact, we had a medical emergency on the mezzanine level, was that about a month ago? I can't remember, a month and a half ago, maybe? And the fire department had responded. We were going to transport an individual from the mezzanine level. They were going to take that person by ambulance to the hospital. So my facility's manager, Fred, went downstairs, got a wheelchair, put it in the lift, and was bringing it up. And the lift just totally dropped on one side, came out of whack. And the frame that holds the lift, because it operates up inside this like chamber frame, actually has separated where it's about this much of a gap in the frame itself. And so Fred, being as smart as Fred is and just being so savvy and knowing how to react to situations, hit the stop button immediately. And then he was trapped in the lift. And as the fire department walks by, Fred is saying, excuse me, do you have a ladder? So we have totally made that non-operational. So that's the bad news. The good news is that we had already received a grant from the state of Wyoming, the very final of their, the grant that the state gave to libraries to improve, or there was the capital construction, the big grant a couple of years ago, and this was some funds they had swept together. We had already been approved for a grant for that, so the lift, a replacement lift, had already been ordered. Woo-hoo! I don't know exactly when that's going to be installed. It is my understanding, the last we talked to our vendor, that he was going to take delivery of that from production at the end of October. So I need to reach out to him this week and see where we are with that. Just because of the holidays, and he is out of state, there is no in-state vendor for this service. I don't anticipate it being before the end of the year. So I'm hoping by January, we'll have the new lift in place. And that actually fixes a standing issue we've had with the library. So it's bad news to begin with and a hidden blessing behind it. So there's that. And then that same grant, we also received funds to formalize a business center on the second floor. So we purchased some privacy pods there. So an entrepreneur or a business that does not have brick and mortar has a place to come, has actual privacy, has access to technology, and can use it to host trainings, they can use it to Zoom, they can use it for interviews, or whatever they would be using it for. And another added benefit is if it's not being used for business, it's nice to have a little small meeting room in the library, which is another known issue that we've been facing. So that's one thing that's new in the library. Any other questions for me?
Commissioner Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here, Lisa and Chris. It's good to see you again. Did you see the Bureau Veritas third-party condition assessment for the library?
I did not, but I was at a meeting last night with some of my foundation and trustees, and I knew that they had come by and done an assessment. And I would love to see that.
Yeah, we should get it. So I take it, were you involved in their onsite?
No, sir.
Or in their facility condition assessment, the pre-survey?
No, sir. Um, was that a written thing?
Yeah.
I don't recall. I've done several things for the county. I may have been involved in that.
Okay, okay. Well, we need to get that to you. And Michelle, will you make sure and get that to Lisa so she and her board can digest that? Basically, the way I read this, there's about $13 million that they say will be needed for reserves over the next 10 years. And they break it down. It's a, this one's, I think, 49 pages. Some of that's, or 43, some of that's attachments. So I think that sometime in the near future, after you guys digest that, we can have more conversations about what we should be budgeting for next year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I look forward to seeing that report.
Commissioner Laird.
I just want to say that I'm glad you're here, all of you, board members, employees, manager. I know that you're more than the manager.
It's all good.
You're the manager. And I think you all are doing a fantastic job. And I think that people of Casper also think you're doing a fantastic job. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, you had asked me like new things in addition to what I shared already. I just recalled there's one other thing I want to share. So Tracy, that WARM funding that we received, the grant from WARM for safety and security, do you recall that discussion? Between that and some other funds, part of it being from Garrett out of the facilities, we recently installed exterior lighting for security and for safety. And so if you were to drive down Second Street, that Prometheus courtyard, when it's dark, is now lit up. We did not have exterior lighting there at all. We were depending on ambient lighting from the streets and passersby. And now we have really good security lighting there. It's pointed straight down. So that entire red area around Prometheus and actually all the way out to the brick sidewalk is very well lit. So I think that was a fantastic thing. We were so excited about that. We were able to put some downlighting on the west side of the building, which has long been an area of concern for me, because there's not a lot of foot traffic over there. And so I think about community safety. If there's not people around with other watchful eyes, it's good to have good lighting. So we have two big, our foundation paid to put two big banners up on the side of that building years ago. And now above each one of those, we have some security downlighting, which I think really improves the safety in that area. And then we've, for years, years, decades, long before me, we had security lighting on top of the building. And Fred recently worked with Garrett, and they upgraded the lumens. Please don't ask me what the numbers are. I don't remember what the first one and the second one was. But we upgraded the lumens, we redirected where those lights were pointing. And now at night, which is really good, because we're entering that time of the year when it will be dark as we leave the library during operating hours, it is lit up in that parking lot, all the way across our parking lot into the Market Square parking, and all the way to the wall that divides us, the Market Square parking, from the rails to trails. So that parking lot is lit up. And then we also added additional downlighting outside of the bookmobile. And a big portion of that was done with WARM funding, and then a portion of that was done with county facilities funding through Garrett. So for that, I thank you. I think providing a safe and secure location as a public facility that sees the amount of foot traffic we have is essential, not only to the patrons and the residents, but to my staff. So thank you for that investment. And I'm glad that we could get grants to stretch those dollars.
Any other questions?
So I also gave, and I think it may have been in your seats when you came back, I think you all should have received a copy of our annual report in the mail, but I put one in the chair. It might be something for you to have at your desk. It's a quick glance of some important information should somebody have a question about the library, that you want to have access to the information. Of course, you could always point them to me, but as the elected commission, it's important that you have access to the information at your fingertips. I also gave the one-pager. I think you might have already had that, I'm not sure. I know, Commissioner Coats, you have seen that. And it kind of addresses this question. It's not the exact same words, but it's the same information. And so that gives, again, good information at your fingertips should your constituents come to you with that question again. So I hope that I've answered that in a way that makes sense. And I appreciate your time. Anything else?
Don't think so. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Cowboy Skills, if you guys want to come on up. Pull some more chairs from around over here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Mickey Shober. I'm a former county commissioner. I am the Cowboy Skills County Commissioner liaison. This is Leslie George. She's an operator out of Sheridan County. Catherine Wilson is...
Government Relations and Lobbying.
Long title. And on the end is Matt Stephen. And Matt is also an operator out of Natrona County, correct?
Correct.
If I could have got a, it's the amount of taxes that are collected through skill-based games throughout the state of Wyoming. And in the part of this conversation, we'll explain those and answer questions. But could I pass these out to you?
Yeah. If you've got a spare one, Michelle will need one.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for this opportunity again. My name is Catherine Wilkinson. I do government relations and lobbying on behalf of Cowboy Skill and the manufacturer of Cowboy Skill Games, which is PaceyMatic. Wanted to thank you very much for the kind invitation to come and give a brief informal presentation on skill games, kind of what they are, and a little bit of the revenue that they're providing, not only to the state, but here in Natrona County. And if I may, I just wanted to take a moment. This is a beautiful space you have here. So thank you. My first time in it. It's a real pleasure to be here with you. So thank you. So a little bit about skill games. Skill games were brought about by a group of, at that time, eight operators in the state. Operators such as Leslie and Matt, some of them second, third-generation companies that have traditionally provided any sort of entertainment that you would find in bars. They run the pool leagues, the dart leagues, they'll do jukeboxes, ATMs, anything that you would see as traditional bar entertainment. And another tool in their toolbox now is skill games. So we work to have these games statutorily placed. It's run through the Gaming Commission at a statewide level. There are very strict restrictions around skill games. So these are not the ones you're going to see popping up like the HHR on every street corner. These are the ones that are meant as supplemental revenue to small businesses, American Legions, bars, VFWs. You'll also see them in truck stops and in smoke shops, smoke shops. Thank you. Lost that last one there for a minute. So they're all very statutorily restricted. You must be at least 21 to play these games. So the game play is a minimum of, a maximum, thank you, of $3. The max payout that you can get from them is $3,000. So these are not meant to be, you know, major gambling devices. They are meant as a source of entertainment. You know, your boyfriend's playing pool, you can sit down, have a beer, and play a skill game. Our operators do share this revenue with these small businesses. It's enabled them to make improvement to a lot of these mom-and-pop bars, keep them afloat, especially during COVID. So I wanted to give you a little bit more on what a skill game is. So this is based on the player, the player's skill, not on the machine or the game itself. So this involves memory retention, pattern recognition, hand-eye dexterity, and timed execution. So this is not just someone sitting at a game and randomly pushing a button, hoping they're going to win. Actually have to participate with the game in order to win. A little bit about the tax, and before these two dive into like specific revenues, you want to hear, they are taxed at 20% on the net proceeds. Of that 20% tax, 45% of that is given to the cities, towns, and counties in which the terminal is located. 45% of that goes to the school foundation program to fund our schools, and the remaining 10% goes to the Gaming Commission right here in Casper for administrative purposes. I think that that's most of just the broad definition. Again, I want to emphasize, these are not the end destination, just meant as supplemental revenue. You know, you're not going to see a lot of advertising for a place that has skill games. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. George to give you a little bit broader picture to the revenue. And CBN is your local operator here in Casper, so he can answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Leslie George, I am a Cowboy Skill operator, and I have a vending company that's ironically called Wyoming Amusement. You'll hear that again in a moment. But we are two different companies. I'm in the northeast corner of Wyoming. So before I look at the revenues, I wanted to add on to what Catherine said about supplementing the small businesses. So skill games have been asking to be contained and regulated this entire time since we've came requesting that regulation. The parameters do keep us in the small businesses, and that model is pretty clear in statute, the limits that she just described. It's intentional because us operators that came asking for it are from Wyoming, and we want our communities to frankly not look like the state north of us or other areas around us. So on the skill front, because we are partnered with many small businesses, we didn't want to have some kind of a invasive look. So I'm proud of that work. So in '23, ultimately, the moratorium that had been on us during that seeking regulation was lifted. And the skill industry experienced an attempt at growth. We did increase by about 20% in calendar year 2023. In '24, we really didn't increase. And in '25, our experience so far is that we haven't, I mean marginal growth. In '23 to '24, we increased by eight locations statewide. So that's important, because the numbers that you see are from the Gaming Commission's annual report of '24. And because we haven't had significant growth in the last two years, '24's numbers are relevant, pretty relevant, and going to be spot on for '25. So if you look at Natrona County on page two, all of the totals are at the top where it says Natrona. Individually below, all the municipalities are listed with their breakdown. Natrona, as Catherine spelled out, are 20% of net proceeds, 10% goes to the Wyoming Gaming Commission, so $62,000 in calendar year 2024, 45% to the School Foundation Program account, so that's $279,000. Then that same amount is split between the counties and the cities in which the games are located. And together, that total does also equal the same as the School Foundation Program account. You can tell by Alcova that because it's not, let's see, is that true on the county? City tax, it's in only the county. So of course, all the revenue from the games at Alcova go to the board. Last piece on here, if you look at page three and the totals that the Gaming Commission compiled, so when you look at our skill market, we are taxed, our tax basis is the net proceeds. So in calendar year '24, I can tell you that skill games across Wyoming generated 31.1 million. That 20% tax is broke down at the bottom of the page, 2.8 to the cities and counties, 2.0 to the school, and then the 10% that goes to the commission yields about 6.1 million in tax to this overarching skill industry in Wyoming.
Mr. Chairman, one other piece that I think I neglected to outline, that's very specific and important to remember with skill, is these are only up to four terminals per location. So again, vastly different than what you'll see on the HHR with the several terminals. These are up to four. Many of these locations do not have four, because it doesn't make sense. There's not space for them in there. So I did want to point out that difference as well. And with that, we turn it over to Matt CBN, in case he has anything to add for you specifically here in Natrona County. And with that, we'd turn it over to Matt Stephen in case he has anything to add for you specifically here in Natrona County.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I think Leslie did a pretty good job of covering everything. One thing that I will, just for your guys' information, just in Natrona County, the only, I only have 27 locations with a total of 100 skill games that we operate in Natrona County. So just some information for you guys to chew on, but here to answer questions if you guys have any. Yeah, there are, what did I write down? That I could come up with, there were six locations that I have competitors that have equipment in for a total of 24 games in those six locations.
Where do you have them at, out at Alkova?
Sunset Bar and Grill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Am I reading this right that Cheyenne really twice? Casper and heavy-duty gamblers? Thousand and Casper fifty-four thousand.
You.
Seems like quite a difference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do outpace them in number of off-track betting locations in Natrona County, but their revenues generated must be high. Well, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. This is skill games. Sorry, I was thinking about the other alternative market. That is correct. So I can tell you that in Cheyenne and Laramie County, that I-80 corridor, when we advocated for truck stops to be an acceptable location, that it was for that passing through, traveling through revenue, and that could have an uptick, I suppose, in Laramie County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nocley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on page two of your handout, for county tax, the total number is $156,000, and it's broken down by local government, city, town. Does Natrona County get the $156,000, and you're just telling us how that $156,000 is computed under those six rows below?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that is correct. So the calculation is of our net proceeds tax, which is 20% of the net proceeds, that's the basis. 45% is split between the city and the county. So if you look at Barnum, the $6,000, there was $12,000 that equated their 45%. Split equally, that's $6,000 to the town of Barnum, and $6,000 to you, to the Board of County Commissioners.
If there is, like Alkova, where there's no city, that reflects the total tax on, and it goes to the county, and it's not split with the city, if there's not a municipality involved in it.
Thank you. So you mentioned HHR a couple of times. For our audience, that's historical horse racing. You know, we've heard a lot from applicants for HHR projects. I don't think we've heard from you guys in the three and a half years I've been doing this. Why are you here? I mean, I'm thankful you're here. I'm thankful that this commission and our community is getting an opportunity to learn more from you. But we've got a legislative session coming up, and I didn't know if there are bills or Senate files being proposed that would impact what you're doing. And Mickey, maybe, you know, maybe you or you as the lobbyist can give us a little bit of a heads up of kind of the bigger picture.
Mr. Chairman, sure. Absolutely. Thank you for that question. That is correct. You have not seen us. We are only authorized at the state level. So when we put the skill games in a statute, it actually was our bill that created the Gaming Commission itself. Before that, it was a mutual commission. And so skill games are not locally authorized. It's all done at a state level. So we are here by invitation to come and just give you a presentation. You know, there's been so much about gaming and explosion of growth of gaming. And our message is, we have really tried to do this responsibly through statute by outlining exactly where they can go, how much you can spend, how much you can win, how many should be in there and the age. So that has been really our message of, don't sweep us in with everyone else with the HHR, historic horse racing specifically, because we have really tried to do this responsibly as Wyoming operators and Wyoming businesses. For the upcoming session, the only skill bill, related bill that we will probably see is unfortunately, one of our competitors has decided to put skill games in grocery stores. Cowboy Skill are not, those are not our games. We want to be clear. We do think that liquor license, which is how they ended up in a grocery store, is a very appropriate place for skill games because it is 21 and up. However, our operators, if they had been in that location, would have not been in the grocery store proper itself. It would have been contained within the liquor store in an age-appropriate area. So the only legislation that we think you'll see is just restricting that if those games, if a grocery store does happen to have a liquor license, that those games themselves are enclosed within it. The Select Gaming Committee was created by the legislature, and you will see several bills that are coming forward with historic horse racing. We've been at the table with those. They don't impact us directly, but I will share that one of them would give more local control, not only to the county commissioners, but also local municipalities in terms of regulating and authorizing. And I believe also revocation comes with that because currently, the way the statute is written with historic horse racing, you all authorize them, but then you can't do anything once they're there. There's no revocation mechanism for that. So I believe they're looking at that as well as the 100-mile rule. There's also a bill coming forward that would restrict operators to having an amount of terminals that are tied to a live track. Those are the bills that we're aware of right now that will probably be coming down the pike during the legislative session.
Another thing I might add, and it hasn't been talked about very much, but Cowboy Skills has a contract with the bar owner. And so the operators furnish the machine, the maintenance, and the upkeep on it, and they split a proceeds out of that, and it's given to the to the bar owner as when they collect the money out of it. And so it's, it's the difference between this and some of the other kinds of games is a pretty good piece of this money goes to the person that owns the liquor license and operates the facility. And so we see quite a few of these in American Legions, Moose Lodges, Elk Clubs, those kinds of things, and it helps their bottom end and their operation. And so Leslie, would you like to maybe explain that a little bit better, how that works?
Certainly. May I, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mickey. So after the state's skill tax and our license fee to our manufacturer, Matt and I are vendors, and we do all that ground game, route operations. We're equal partners with each of our locations. So that we are all individually licensed, us as vendors, and the locations are licensed as operators. And the industry prior to skill games that we were in was just coin-op amusement, very recreation-focused on pool tables, dartboards, jukeboxes. And we ran, do still, this is still a large part of our industry. So the splits was the way that we operated that business, splitting revenues on lesser lucrative games, pool tables and so on. And so that's the model that continues with skill games.
And to answer the question, I talked to Catherine down at Waco, and there was a presentation down there. And with all the different gambling, the different venues, everything that's going on right now, I think it's important that we're educated on what's going on out there and how the different statutes actually regulate different groups. Because that's been one of the biggest questions, and I know there's a lot of that that people are wondering, you know, where we're going to put a cap on it. And I think that's important for us to know those answers and be part of it because we do have one of the largest legislative contingencies in the state, Natrona County. And if we work with our legislators on these, then I think it's important that we be able to do that and talk to them about what is important to our county and to the cities in this county. Commissioner Coats.
So I guess first an observation appears that there's a, maybe some animosity might not be the right word, but between skill games and HHR, maybe as far as, I don't know if it's business impact or otherwise, or moral impact that you're feeling. But that aside, how do, I guess as a lobbyist and as purveyors, how do you see changes to zoning, potentially at the local level, impacting your business model? And is that something that you welcome more local control?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So we would be opposed to moving skill games into zoning just because our business partners in the bars, VFWs, they go through zoning process, but ours is at the state level, and we have set up that framework. I don't know that animosity is the right word, but I think there's been a lot of confusion between the two industries. The games do look similar. So we want to be sure that people are educated to know that we really have tried to take steps to keep these inappropriate locations for businesses. We try to stay involved on a local level. We are very honored to have been asked here today to give you some education. In that bill, we're currently not looped in on that zoning bill. That is, I can't recall, I have to go look to see if that bill did pass. That was another conversation held at that Select Gaming Committee. And forgive me, I can't recall off the top of my head if that one passed or not, but that is certainly a conversation that is going on with the Select Gaming Committee.
Yes, a final question. Will you clarify for the public or those that are maybe not aware of the key difference between gaming and historic horse racing from a consumer's perspective?
Mr. Chairman, may I answer that question? So to the consumer, the engagement with the machine is a different experience because you're required to interact in order to have a successful outcome. So it's not that mind-numbing, just, you know, check out, hit a button. You're engaging with the machine. And while it's menial work, lining up three icons in a row and paying attention to if there's two possibilities and one's better, it's still brain engagement, similar to other tablet games. And that itself slows down the pace of play and serves as an innate regulation on top of those lowered parameters that we advocated for in statute, because we are located in many more locations.
If I may add, skill games are, there's a number of different games on the monitor that you can pick and choose. But, you know, I relate them, they're closer to pinball machines, and you, instead of getting credits to play more games, you get some money back out of it. And, you know, and historical horse racing is different, and it's based off of a different philosophy. And there is considerably more money that you can win in one of those, and you can also put more money in it at the same time. Skills are, games are based different, and it's a different, it's with the idea that this is entertainment, amusement, and people are not going typically mentality. They won't go there and put money in them, hoping they can win enough to pay their mortgage off. And that's the mentality or the thought and idea behind skill games.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nocley.
Just to follow up to that, Mickey, and for anybody, sometimes there's a concern from some of our constituents that there's an addictive component to all of this. And I was just wondering if you're aware of any studies or papers, peer-reviewed articles that would say this is what skill games is in regard to addictive quality or the nature of it. And this is what HHR off-track betting is. Are you aware of any of those kinds of reports, studies, or papers?
Mr. Chairman, when we were seeking regulations and we went for the reduced parameters, we didn't have skill game data out, and it was not widely studied. I would say skill games, even though we are now five years regulated in Wyoming, are still not widely reported on the study of. But that's also true, I think, generally speaking, for the chance-based, high-stakes lucrative gambling world as well. The studies, the studies out there that we looked at were from that realm and discussed. When you have more than like four or five games in a location, it creates a competitive atmosphere. Players then will feed on the buzz of somebody next to them, ring, ring, ringing. So that was part of why we wanted to keep it small. I mean, the small scale worked in our existing business model, the way we're already partnered with our small business locations. So we were very in favor of reducing parameters for safety and for all of those things. I wish I had a study that told you that all of the parameters that we asked for are doing the job perfectly. Hopefully, that data will come. The Gaming Commission is working hard on including all of us in the National Council on Problem Gambling work. We just recently had a whole day of meetings where they're trying to come up with not just studies and information for decision-makers, but for all of us who are stakeholders to do what we can and try and prevent problems. I'm hopeful to rule out our grocery store problem very quickly in this session.
Well, thank you for your candid answer, and I look forward to seeing how that develops through the commission, and thanks for your participation in that.
Commissioner Mow.
Yeah, going to the legislation in the grocery store. A little jarring walking in, seeing games there. Or see, get out your fistful. Do you see that legislation moving forward where we don't look like Montana or what?
We're advocating for it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we are actively working with the committee and have come up with language that will be proposed during the Management Council and plan to work that through. Again, that was just a side effect of an unanticipated consequence. Our group had never intended to be specifically in grocery stores here in Wyoming. It's not an appropriate market for a liquor store. It is an appropriate, age-appropriate place. So it's just unfortunate that it, frankly, competitor got in.
So if there'd been a little bit of local review, like what's done for the others when it comes before us, while we can't revoke, we can at least talk and have a little review there, would that potentially have helped?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this point was also brought up at the Select Gaming Committee, and I think the Executive Director, Larry Mendy, has committed to trying to put out notices more with skill games going out. I know that with WAM and WCCA, that they have been monitoring the Gaming Commission agendas as well for, may come up for, can you hear me?
Yeah, don't, it's nothing personal.
It's like, my time is up. I'm sorry, they've been monitoring the Gaming Commission agendas too for anyone that would come up. Their next meeting, I believe, is November 19th and 20th, or 20th and 21st, I believe, 20th and 21st, where they're having their annual meeting. There is another skill vendor that is up for license there. I mean, I think it's always good to have, you know, public participation at all of those meetings. And since it is at a state level, you know, that is where you would be able to publicly have your say.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Leary.
Thanks for coming in. What is the, do you have any idea what the average age is of your players? Take a wild guess.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to guess that we've heard from liquor industry, all of our customers, that it is a struggle to get the next generation to come commit to hanging out and recreating. In their establishment, they are entertained by many things other than what we all maybe grew up being entertained when we turned 21 and having that change. So clearly, it's age 21-plus where the skill games are allowed to operate. I'm going to guess that that number is higher than we would expect. I'm going to guess it's 40 years old.
So this has been authorized by the Wyoming Legislature. So what you're doing is totally law. So when I first looked at this and I saw this, these numbers, I'm not happy with our legislature, not over this, but over taxes. This looks like another tax to me. Fun, fun to pay the tax. And I think that that's what horse racing is all about. It's obvious when you throw these numbers out that we get from people playing the games. I have to tell you, I'm not against your games at all or your ability to make money, but I don't like the way our local government is taxing our people. taxing their uh houses in a way that I think is is could be illegal. And uh so then I see them coming up with new ways of uh not calling something a tax and saying it's a fun game you can go play. So that's what our government does, but it doesn't mean I have to like it. And it's no reflection on you all either. I don't intend that as any reflection on you. I I know some of you, I think you're all all really nice people and you're doing a good job. Thank you for coming in. I had to say my piece about what I think about taxes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I appreciate you all coming in today. Um, like I said, I think that's, I think this is an area that I don't think any of us are as educated as we would like to be on some of these questions because there's so many different aspects of it. And the fact that one of your competitors is wanting to put them in grocery stores, um, I don't think I don't think a lot of people want to see that. Um, you know, I know I personally don't want to see that. But I do appreciate you guys coming in today and providing this information to us and and it's it just gives us something else, another arrow in the quiver, so to say. So I do appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the invitations.
You bet, thanks.
Um, I would just add, if you have any follow up questions, feel free to reach out to any of us and more than happy to visit. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's not hard. Right, good afternoon. I guess I came here before you this afternoon to uh just follow up on the facilities condition assessment that we received. Um, uh, we got the final reports just in ending last week, so it's kind of perfect timing to get down and sit in front of you. They're pretty, pretty extensive. Um, for the most part, I'll just summarize that ninety percent of the buildings that um of the five we had assessed scored in their scoring rating um mostly fair to good condition with limited poor quality um in the buildings. The main thing that you'll see throughout most of the buildings and yes, sir, I think this is. The common theme we saw across main across the five buildings that we had looked at um was mainly just aging, aging in infrastructure, electrical plumbing systems, um everything like that. And that, as you all know and are aware of, in my time here, that we've been trying to stay on top of that and replace old equipment with new. Um, step up to kind of get into this newer age of how buildings are run and and comfortable work environments are met. Another one is just a little bit of deferred maintenance in some areas, outdated casework, elevator equipments outdated into the buildings as as Lisa mentioned today. And and minimal things like flooring. As far as ADA compliance, everything was generally acceptable with just some minor improvements needed. Um, on some areas that actually aren't even being used in the building. So you know, like the fifth floor courtrooms at the Hall of Justice, um, those old courtrooms and things like that, that if if they do get changed, um, we'll have to update those, but if not, then it is what it is. Um, another issue that was seen a lot in common was um security systems, uh, lack of security systems in in all of our buildings. If they did give us a five, ten and twenty year capital plan for each of those five buildings, which will help me present those to you later in in budget years to come and and have that backing of what service is done to pieces of equipment or what age they are. Um, and I'll get into that more with that the software that came with this assessment. It itemized every single piece of equipment that we own, um, gave a date, manufacturer, what it would cost to replace it right now or what it would cost to replace in twenty years if we had that crystal ball, right? But um, just a guess in that. And so that that'll be really nice to be able to track what kind of maintenance puts into each piece of equipment and um stay on top of these things. Any questions?
Garrett, was there were there any items that were specifically identified as stuff that we things that we needed to address immediately or overall, are we in fairly good shape or?
Um, there was overall, we're in fairly good shape. There are a few things, um, key issues that were were looked at that um needed to be replaced. And as again, these are a suggestion by this company, right? Yes, we know these, some of the windows in the buildings are forty to sixty years old, right? We know that, but um those things were mentioned, some more out carpet, things that were were progressing and and have already been budgeted for to replace and update. Mainly things just like that.
Or most of them just, I don't want to say minor because they're all expensive, but less major.
Yes, most of them are less major.
Okay. Commissioner Coates.
Garrett, I want to thank you for all the time and effort you put into this and getting basically doing all the legwork to be able to produce this document along with the uh the contractor on it. And I'm really excited to see what you what you do with forecasting out your budgets over the next, I guess, two decades or so.
Yeah.
Thank you for everything.
Yep, thank you.
Garrett, I know we've been working on this for several years.
Yeah.
And uh and I'm glad that we're, we finally have this assessment that I think it's going to help us out a lot as far as our overall budgeting and scheduling of things down the down the road.
Yep, yes, sir, it will. And and in those documents I I sent you guys this afternoon, you'll be able to scroll through and it's summarized in graphs and everything later so that you can see that twenty year capital plan as well and and what major key areas are there. Um, a lot of that forty pages can be skipped. Um, a lot of its pictures of assets that and equipment, um, dates and files like that, but um the first ten pages are are the main of it.
Commissioner Layer.
Do you need to do this for more buildings?
Yes, sir, I would like to.
Yeah, I that's I was hoping you'd do all of the all of the building.
I did our older buildings first. Um, I wanted to see what this software and and tracking available or um compatibility would be. Uh, now that I've been able to play with it for a week or so, it's 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 really handy. Um, I think in the future it would be something to look into to add the two major buildings that aren't in there. One bit would be the new health building, right? It's it's going to be new, but we'll be able to track it from day one. We'll be having all of that information um on to stay with it for me or for the predecessor or whoever's next, right? It it's going to help everybody.
When we when we originally approved this, didn't we give you the authority to do that?
Uh, no, sir, I didn't ask for the, I just asked for these five.
Okay. So are you going to then? When are you going to ask for the rest?
When the budget allows.
Well, we need the information though, don't we?
Yes, sir.
For ourselves and future commissioners would be very, very good for everybody to have that.
Yep, and I and I didn't know what it was going to cost in the beginning, right? I didn't really um know what a third party was going to come in and look like and what that um fiscal responsibility was going to land on us. And now knowing that and what it kind of costs per square foot, um, I think it it's something that can be done.
Commissioner Mel.
With that software and whatnot, are you are you able to or modify the assets as necessary?
Yes, yep, each asset's individual.
Outstanding.
Yep, so there's twenty thousand some assets that is then broke down into building or um categorized through plumbing asset or a heating and cooling asset, um, things of that nature.
So this will be able to be continued on?
Yep, yep, I can take a picture of the name tag of the new one, replace the old one and what it serves with the new one and it'll stay into that system from then on.
Thank you.
Garrett, do these, does this system have kind of an obsolescent date built in to a lot of this stuff like motors?
Yes, yes, it does.
Eighty units and that kind of stuff, just, I know it's not exact, but.
It it does and it and it gives you like a warning of, hey, here in the next three years, these are the four units that are they say are that this is what their life is going to be, their lifespan. And it'll throw that into um that information is available for your budgeting system.
Well, and I know anymore with everything. Having planned obsolescence.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, well, I have a comment, I guess.
Go ahead, Tracy.
In looking at the Hall of Justice report and the courthouse report, page nine of both of those reports seem to be the same. So I'm a little confused um as to how that happens. It's showing an exterior door, the same door for both um facilities, which would not be correct, and then the electrical system. So it looks like page nine is a duplicate for both of those, so what I don't understand.
Um, I'll have to look at that. I guess I might have skipped over that, but I know what picture you're talking about.
I look at pictures.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Garrett? Garrett, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Getting on this and and moving forward. And I think this is definitely something that is going to help us as far as our projections go. And uh hopefully help us stay ahead of the game instead of playing catch up in a lot of these areas. Because you know, if nothing else, it's like that that obsolescence area. You can kind of figure out where you're going to have to start putting a lot more effort and time and, you know, different items.
Yes, sir.
That are going to start breaking and then figure out when you can't get the parts for them anymore, which is, I think, is a bigger problem anymore as far as obsolescence goes because it's not that the part that broke isn't necessarily a major part, but if you can't get it, it's a major part.
They're not, parts aren't as easy to replace as they used to be, that's for sure.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. I appreciate everything, so anybody else have any questions? All right.
All right, thank you for your time. What did you say?
That's so.
Maybe they should have.
John, I appreciate you coming in today and uh if you'll start out with giving us a little background before you jump into it, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I will, and uh my name is John Masterson, my address is one fifty nine North Walcott. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to appear in front of you here today. Thank you for giving me some time. I know your time is precious. I've tried to cut this down as much as possible uh and respect your time. Um, and I also want to express my appreciation to Ms. Maines, who's been very helpful in uh getting this all assembled. Um, I'm not here to complain, I'm not here to ask you uh for anything specifically. I'm I'm here because um I'm surprised that a significant project taking place in Carbon County seems to have gone underneath the radar. And um I'll get to why we would care about something that happens in Carbon County, but um it's 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 disturbing to me when something of this magnitude does not seem to have a a profile or an awareness. I was not being disingenuous in my memo when I said if the commission is aware of this, up on it and everything's good. You know, I can give you back fifteen minutes of your day. But I'm I'm very concerned as citizen John that this is going under the radar and the consequences, if you'll pardon the pun, downstream to us could be significant. I need to note one thing, I've served on a lot of boards, I've served on a lot of commissions. And I want to be very clear that I'm not here representing anyone. I'm not here to speak on behalf of anyone, I'm not lobbying, this is just John uh with a concern to present to the council. I'm shocked at how many people I know elected and not who are who've never heard of this project. It's called the Semino Pump Storage Project. And if they have heard about it, they don't really know what it is or what it means. Um, so uh the easiest way to do this tech wise is what's up on the screen is a video uh that is on the developer's website. It's two minutes, twenty four seconds long. And it will show you, there's no, the background music is, you know, there's no narration, but it will show you what they propose to do uh at Semino. Um, and then with your permission, Mr. Chairman, um, I've got a PowerPoint. I'll show you a couple slides and help fill in some details if I may. That's not for me. I'm ready, hit it if you are, Mr. Mr. Chairman. You're fine. Oh, you killed it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I need to run real quick. Hmm? Got a quick meeting.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, no, and I've learned about this through Cade um meetings and whatnot. So I do appreciate you bringing it forward because a lot of people, like you say, probably don't know about this and it is kind of quiet for whatever reason. So I do appreciate your effort on that part. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you. Only one though. Let me, while she's doing that, let me tell you what, and please, if you know this, stop me. Pump storage is a, is, is a real basic concept, it's a battery. You have a, a body of water down low and you have a body of water up high, and when energy's cheap at night, you pump water up to the upper reservoir, and during the day when there's a high demand or you need to level out flow of electrons, you release the water and it comes back down into the lower pool. It's a very simple concept, it's accepted, it's done. The interesting thing about this is that this is not a closed-loop system. Usually these consist of isolated, two isolated bodies of water. This is an open loop because they're proposing to use Semino reservoir as the bottom reservoir. So what they would be doing is pumping about ten thousand eight hundred acre feet of water out of Semino every, every day up into an upper pond. And then releasing it during the course of the day at a rate of about ten thousand seven hundred CFS back into Semino to generate electricity. The project is expected to take four to six years. Oh, there you go. I'll just let it play out, Mr. Chairman.
Can you narrate it? Can you narrate what we're seeing?
That's an overview of Semino, these are the work areas that would be involved with the construction of the project. That's the upper reservoir that would need to be constructed. I'm sorry? Then underneath, this is all underground tunnels thirty feet in diameter. About sixty-seven hundred feet of thirty-foot diameter tunnel, and that's the lower intake and outtake for the project. Obviously, when you're pumping up, they have a nice animation of Semino dropping. The inner workings, that would, those would also be underground blasted out. There are two transmission lines that will have to be built. Two parallel thirty-mile transmission lines will need to be constructed, those will be in Carbon County. And one existing transmission line will have to be relocated. And they're connecting to the Aeola substation north.
Is this a state or a federal project?
This is a private project proposal that requires FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approval, as well as the usual panoply of state permits and processes. I'll see if I can figure out. We're gonna use this one. So, I can skip through a couple of these, you can go to their website and watch that video as many times as you want.
So John, where's this power supposed to end up?
This power will be dropped into the energy grid and wherever our power goes. It's, you can't stop an electron generated in Wyoming by any means from going out of state. But it's a nine hundred megawatt facility that's slightly smaller than Dave Johnson at its maximum. So I, and I am personally not aware that there's a demand for that electricity in Wyoming, at least right now. So certainly it would go into the grid and likely west.
Okay, so again, we wouldn't get a whole lot of benefit out of something.
The state as a whole, I, I don't believe so, but that's...
Or the citizens as a whole.
I would agree with that.
And what would it do to wildlife in that area?
Well, it's funny you should bring that up, sir. That's, I get, like I said, I could skip through this because we did the video first. Upper basin, lower basin, power source, it's, the concept is, is, is very straightforward. This is from the developer's website, and just to be full disclosure, to let you know what the benefits are that they list. It includes nine hundred megawatts of generation. Thirty-five full-time operator jobs, annual wages between eighty and a hundred and twenty thousand. A small number, I can't read, direct construction jobs for four to six years. And a small number, I can't read, in annual revenue produced based on taxation, the project. But those are the, that's the developer's spreadsheet, for lack of a better term. This is what gets my attention. This is on the developer's homepage, and they talk about the development, construction, operation phases, and at the bottom is public engagement. And this is what, this is what hooks me, is that I personally, maybe I live in the dark, maybe I live in the cave, I have not seen public engagement, I haven't heard about public meetings, I do not know if they have come and spoken to you, answered questions, addressed issues that you may have, but what I see, from where I sit, it's under the radar. Just to back up, upper reservoir, proposed spillway, those are the existing dams. The outflow structure down there would be right down by Semino Dam. And again, you're gonna be flowing water out at about ten thousand CFS, sent, ten thousand CFS is a number until I did some research.
That's more than what the Platte River runs through town.
Right now the Platte.
It's about a third again, what the Platte River runs through town at its high flood stage. When we had our high flood stage back in the early two thousands, we were running seventy-three hundred CFS.
Yes sir.
And this is higher than that.
Yes, every day.
So it's substantially.
Every day.
Yeah. So what's that gonna do to scouring? And what's it gonna do to fisheries?
What is it gonna do to, when you take water from a shallow upper reservoir that's warm, especially during a low water year, and we've seen a lot of those recently, and put it down into cold water down at the base of Semino Dam, release that water, and it flows where? It flows downstream into the Miracle Mile, Gray Reef, all the way back down into Casper. And as you point out, Mr. Chairman, trout are very particular when it comes to temperatures, they're divas. And if you, if you change the temperature of the water by a degree or two, you're going to have a serious impact on that fishery. And that fishery is the source of income, recreation, enjoyment for a lot of folks. Yes sir, they do, and they are participating in the process. The, the thing you need to be aware of is the Game and Fish is not a regulatory agency. It cannot, it does not have the ability to stop something. It, it issues its advice, its concerns, but that's about all that the Game and Fish can do. I think, from a legal or from a political point of view, I think the FERC permit is the first place to comment upon and let FERC know the concerns. I need you to know, I don't, I cannot sit here in good faith and tell you this project is, is evil or it's bad, or it is going to cause problems, I'm not gonna tell you that. The problem is I don't know, and I don't know, but I do know that the risk that something bad will happen is there, and it's serious, and to my knowledge, those things aren't being talked about publicly in that public engagement sphere. I'm not, I am not against...
Something similar been done before in other states that we could look to?
Oh, I'm sure other states have done this, but we have a very peculiar situation here because it's an open loop, and where they are dumping water down is a very sensitive area for economic reasons, recreation reasons. You know, the, the, the North Platte River is literally why Casper is here. And if we start tinkering here, we can get all the studies we can get, we can, we can do all that stuff, but there's a risk, and I, I, I am not comfortable, given the lack of public transparency, that that risk can be avoided. And if, if, if this project goes forward and something bad happens, you have high, higher temperature water mixing comes down here, you increase the temperature of the water, you increase the turbidity of the water, the sediment in the water, you mess around with the dissolved oxygen concentration, all those things will happen. And if those things trigger a problem in the Miracle Mile, we're not gonna get it back. You, you're not gonna unwind a multi-billion dollar project. And maybe those things will be okay, but we just don't know, I don't know. And I'm concerned enough about it and the, and the consequences it could bring.
John?
Yes sir.
Has the Wyoming Game and Fish Department provided any written comments on this proposed project?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nick Lason, they have, they have provided comments throughout the process to date. The draft environmental impact statement has come out, and they are preparing formal comments to the draft environmental impact statement.
What is the, what is the deadline to make comment in the, for the environmental assessment?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nick Lason, I wish I knew, I'm sorry, I do not know that.
And, and with regard to FERC, I guess maybe FERC can't do anything until they, until this EA's done?
Yes sir.
So we've got a little time there. I, I personally, and I think probably this commission would appreciate seeing some of the, a- any kind of written reports or comments from, from the Game and Fish Department to give us a little bit more background. My other question, so if, if something could be provided to our, to Michelle, that would be great. The other question is, have you visited with Congress County, I'm sorry, Carbon County Commissioners yet? And I think you shook your head no.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nick Lason, I, I have not. I figured I'd start at home and see if you threw me out of the room or not. I, I, I do know they are very aware of it, I do not know what kind of communication you have had with them, that's for you.
Mr. Chairman, do you, do you know what our Carbon County colleagues are, are thinking on this?
No. In short, I, you know, one of the other concerns I've got about there is the fishery is one thing, but that's also one of the prized bighorn sheep areas in the state. And bighorn sheep do not take very well to disturbance at all. We know that from years and years of study, including the Whiskey Mountain and a lot of others that are not only within the state but outside the state. And you know, for that type of operation for that timeframe in a critical winter range, and I know, I know there's also a lot of sage grouse down in that area, and I would think that the governor would be inclined to speak up on that side of it. I know this is not the only project that I've heard that's, that's like this, I know it's in other, other areas. The volume, the sheer volume that they're talking about concerns me, just because of the amount of water that's associated with that and what that's gonna do, not only downstream, but also what it's gonna do to Semino. And how are they gonna regulate that, and what's it also gonna do to the water flow through Semino that's currently producing, because you're obviously, if you're taking ten thousand CFS out for that timeframe, then it's going to, there, there's obviously gonna have to be a give and take there. That water's not gonna be available to go through the dam. And there's other areas that are associated with the problems of that. I'd also like to know just exactly what the Bureau of Rec has to think about all this. And I'm just, I'm just throwing
Yeah.
things out there right now, these are all areas or concern that should be specifically addressed, and I do appreciate you, you bringing this up, cuz I do think that this is something that could have a dramatic effect on Nautrona County down the road, even though this is exclusively in Carbon County. And I know personally I'd be more than willing to work with our commissioners in DeChesney County to see what their, their thoughts are too, so.
If I can, if, if I may, skip ahead a couple of slides, Mr. Chairman. That's a, that's a schematic overview, shows you where all the underground pipes are, but the reason why I wanted to show you that was, if you add the dimensions of things, it shows you, it gives you an idea of the scale of this. And as Chairman North pointed out, a five-year construction project, they say four to six involving blasting, truck traffic, road closures. Bighorn sheep don't like that very much, and the only disease-free bighorn sheep herd in the state of Wyoming is in the Ferris Semino Mountains. And five years is a generation for sheep. So you start skittering them off into other places where they have to be removed. A lot of, a lot of consequences could happen. Here's a, an idea of what you were talking about, so recreation-wise, pulling out that volume of water will fluctuate Semino ten to twelve inches a day. You're gonna have limited access to the dam and the canyon because there's gonna be, as you said, half again, the amount of water is in the Platte during flood stage coming down during the day. So I don't think you're gonna wanna go boating down by the dam where it's deep and where the big fish are. Or the canyon. Ice fishing as well, cuz you won't have solid ice to go in. As well as, all during that construction process, camping, hiking, access, all those things. Bighorn sheep we talked about, there's a big concern there, also overlap sage grouse core and general areas, especially the transmission lines. Mule deer crucial winter range is up there. So we're gonna, we're gonna disturb that. And then your, your kind of laundry list of other threatened and endangered critters that are out there. But the, the banner carriers are kind of the bighorn sheep and mule deer and sage grouse. The aquatic stuff we talked about, temperature, all those things. The other one that got cut off on the bottom of this that I've heard nothing about is dam safety. It is an eighty-four-year-old dam. There have been some studies on it that, that show, you know, when it was built, there wasn't a lot of sophistication with concrete and what happens with its interaction with its environment, and I don't know what's gonna happen. Anecdotally, they're only filling Semino eighty percent right now because of those concerns. Anecdotal, I don't have an authoritative source, but if that's true, now we're gonna stress it with this daily influx.
John, we're gonna have to
Yes sir.
wrap it up, we're running a little behind, but...
Let me do this. If I may.
Yes.
I'll do, I'll be really quick.
Okay. Okay.
The only study I could find about the, if you want to boil it down to just economics, the 2017 study from the University of Wyoming about the impact of hunting, fishing and wildlife watching in Wyoming. The numbers they came up with. And the total impact is over a billion dollars in twen- in 2017. That's statewide, admittedly. It's hard to get much more granular than that. Locally, this is from Visit Casper Stats last year. They issued this in May. Travel itself, 2,890 jobs, travelers spending 377.8 million, generating all those taxes. That includes hunters, that includes fishermen. Locally anecdotal, uh, a guide, um, who was willing to talk to me, indicated these were, these were his, the last time he tried to gather some data, this is what one guy in Nautrona County passed along in 2023. 2.6 million in direct revenue to Nautrona County while supporting 45 full and part-time jobs. So if we just want to look at it economically and just from a fishing angle, those are the kind of things that gets my attention. And then I'm going to come back to that. That's my last one. I don't know why there's not more public outreach by a developer who wants to do this. If you want to do this, if everything's good, you know, communicate and talk to people. But that's why I'm here, is because I'm concerned about the lack of that. It always makes me a little jumpy. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it and, uh, thanks for keep, keeping me on task, Chairman.
Okay. Thanks, John.
So I just have a comment, John. I, you know, being on this commission, I see, see this happening in other areas, like somebody wanting to build a, a 2,000 acre solar farm is going to sit there where all of these windmills that are going up that affect wildlife. It's, uh, it's obvious to me there are some people don't care about our wildlife. So I'm glad you came in with this.
Thank you, Mr. Leeson.
And I hope that you get, um, maybe time for you to go give a, uh, press release to the newspaper and a few other places where people, I don't think our viewership here is huge. So, so you can get, get to more people because that is important for them to know this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Leeson, thank you. As I, as I said, I'm not against development. I understand it's going to happen and, but the way to do it is to be open about it and that's what concerns me. I don't, I'm, I, I don't know what, if anything, to ask you to do as a commission, but at least be aware and whatever steps you choose to take are, are yours. Thank you.
I just wish some of these out-of-state people leave us alone.
So, all right. Thank you, John. Great. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for, 16 dash four dash 405, uh, litigation and property acquisition.
Served.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner Coats. All in favor, say aye. All right. We are now in executive session.
All right, we are back in session. Um, we did take action to move forward on potential property acquisition and litigation. Um, there were no other actions taken at this point. So at this point, we will be recessed until 5:30 and we will resume our regular meeting.
Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back into session. At this point, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Milne. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, so moved, all right. Michelle, would you like to discuss the timing?
Oh, two of them, thank you, are requesting reappointment. One is for the Fair Board, the other one is for the Citizens Transportation. And both of those applicants are applying for their board plus an additional board. So I take that back, there'll be eight people that we need to interview. Fifteen minutes apiece, we'll call a special meeting, then you guys interview everyone, go into exec, and then come back out and make the appointments, and then I can do the letters the next day. So what, just whatever works for your guys' schedule, and when you plan on doing it.
Have you guys got any preference? Next week's kind of...
So, I don't really care as far as days, other than weekdays, I'm open after five, 5:30 would be great, till whenever we get it done, or on a Saturday.
I'm, Saturdays, I am open, and I guess the only thing for me is the next two Thursdays, I have, I have my monkey, so I wouldn't, I could be here by like 5:30.
Say what?
You want a monkey?
Oh, that came out wrong, I have my granddaughter.
Okay.
So, so that Thursday, so I could do Thursday, that came out wrong, that came out wrong, I forgot, I was talking on mic. Um, so on Thursday, I can be here in the evening if needed, I just won't be here during the day, because of my granddaughter. Previous engagement, yes.
Well, next, next Thursday, we have, we have Parks Board meeting anyway, so that, that would be out.
Mr. Chairman, what about the following Wednesday, the 19th, or that Thursday? I have a Health Board meeting, but I could skip that.
The 20th, I have another, I have a meeting that night.
So what about the 19th?
The 19th, uh, should...
Planning and zoning has this room.
I thought they had on the 18th.
I see that.
The 18th is best.
Oh, wait, wait, they have the 19th, 'cause it's, the 18th is ours.
But, we could go in our office.
I thought P&amp;Z was on the 12th.
Can't we do our thing back there, anyway?
Well, let me up here.
They can be up here, we can do it in here.
Yeah, we could be over there.
Yeah, we can do all of our interviews back there, so that's not, that's not that big of a deal.
I assume, Mr. Nicolason, you opened for business?
So, the...
You're just jealous.
The 12th, it looks like Jim has a conflict at 5:30.
12th?
On the 12th, yeah.
Okay. So, what's another, what's another night?
What, did we say no on the 19th?
I think we do the 19th.
Okay, so the 19th, we could do it in our office, um, that would be a Wednesday, and I think, and the, and that actually might be very convenient, because the building will already be unlocked for a public meeting.
That'll be good, that would, we don't have to worry about having the gate, the doors open, or anything else.
Yeah.
Um, so...
I just know that by night.
Yes.
Yes.
Jim, what'd you, what time did you say? Five or 5:30?
Five, 5:30, somewhere in there. Whatever would be convenient for y'all and for the applicants.
Any problem with doing that, being here at 5:30 that night?
5:30 sounds good.
Okay.
5:30 sounds good.
Give people time to get off work and get over here.
You guys want to get off the Parks Board, we can do a few more interviews, just get that done? Just saying, you know, just for funsies.
Well...
So...
We talk about Parks Board stuff. An hour later. Are we...
Is this kind of like open forum?
Family first, or... Because then we need to do interviews.
And then that will extend it, or we'll just schedule another night, to do, to do those interviews.
I think we just, I think we just stick with the eight that I have. Do those later.
So right now, let's just do the 19th, let's just plan on the 19th, at 5:34. This is gonna be for the Fair Board, the Airport Board, um, and then Transportation, and Predator Board, and what else?
Sorry, I was, I was making a calendar.
Did we have anybody put their name in for the historical consideration?
And that's one, Historic Preservation Commission, that is one. Uh, Rick Young, the director at Casper, Fort Casper, he is retiring, he said he may be back later on, but right now, he is retiring. Um, I did ask to see if his, um, his replacement was going to be interested, he said he didn't know. So we do have Historic Preservation, the Airport Board, um, Planning and Development Board of Appeals, we have two positions on that, but we don't have any applicants. Um, Citizens Transportation Advisory, which is wanting a, that one is a request for reappointment. Fair has two positions, one is requesting reappointment, and then I think I did say Predator Management District, that one, I haven't heard anything yet.
Who's requesting reappointment, and have they been there two terms already?
Um, Joanne True has only been on for one term for the Fair, and she's requesting reappointment. And then we have Citizens Transportation, um, Jason Eiler, he's only been on the turn, or on the board for one term.
Have there been any complaints or any problems with either of those two people from the board?
I have not heard anything.
Has the board, does the board, has the board, either one of them made a recommendation of getting those people back or not?
I have a board recommendation for Pete's, um, for Pete Griner's vacancy, and I'm, I'm waiting on one for Joanne True, for the Fair.
If they haven't turned out, if they're on the board currently, and there's no problems with them, I'd say just, let's appoint, reappoint those guys, and then look at the other vacancies personally.
Okay.
Well, Jason wants to be on, we're gonna have to re, we're gonna have to...
We'll have to interview him anyways, yeah.
So that's, so basically, it would just be one position.
Save a little bit of time.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to interview him anyways, because he's applying for the Airport Board as well.
Right.
So, and Joanne True is interviewing for that board as well.
Oh, okay, so we need both of them anyways, yeah.
And then, and then if you guys know anybody with the Historic Preservation Commission, um...
Wait, I thought, wait, Joanne's planned for the Parks Board, I mean, the Fair Board.
Fair, she's already on the Fair Board.
Right.
And then, I believe...
I didn't think she was on that list for the, for the Airport.
Um...
I know Renee was on there, but I don't remember.
Okay, maybe I'm, hold on, let me get to my different folder here. Um... Okay, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think we had discussions, and I got myself confused. Um... For some reason... But yeah, I will look at that again, because I'm, I've confused myself.
Just think of what you're doing to us.
Okay, so... Maybe, maybe I just want her to be on that board, I don't know. Um...
Do we have to know right now, or should we?
No, we don't, no, no, we, we don't, we've got, we've got two weeks to think about this, so...
So, so I take that back, I take that back. Um, maybe, yeah, I'm confusing myself. So, we have one applicant, that he's applied for the Fair and the Airport, maybe that's where I'm confusing myself, so we have two of them, that applied for two of them. So, um, yeah. So if you know anybody for Historic, and if you know anybody for Predator Management, we don't have any applicants for that one, and we don't have any applicants for the, um, uh, Planning and Development Board of Appeals, we need a plumber, and somebody with an, uh, mechanical background.
For the Predator Management, what is that? Which one is that?
This one is Sportsman.
Sportsman, okay.
Um, now let me bring that one up real quick.
I thought Huey Sanford was the one that was...
Yeah, it is Huey Sanford, let me bring him up. Um... He is... Yeah, I just have him as a county member, so... So I think he, yeah, I don't think he's a producer on anything, so I think he's just a county appointment. So Sportsman, you just have to have a, I think you have to have a hunting license within, like, two years or something like that.
Okay, so we'll set that for 5:30 on the 19th.
Okay, and then, real quick, since you guys did bring up the Parks Board stuff, um, since I'm in there, so, because it will give you guys an idea, because that's going to play a part too. Um, do you, we have... So we have five applicants that will have to be interviewed, you guys have already interviewed four. So when you guys get to around that part, right now, we're sitting on, we're sitting on five.
Okay.
Well, I don't have any intention of being on that board after January 1st.
Same.
Anyway, all right, so we'll get these...
Especially from you.
We'll get these taken care of... On the 19th, and then we'll move, move forward. And, we'll get something figured out for the other interviews. And we'll get something figured out for the other interviews.
All right, all you guys have to do is accept it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, yes, the nineteenth of November. Okay, anyway, we're gonna move on to public comment. Since we don't have any public in here, um, I guess we won't have any public comment tonight, so we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Nicolason.
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Mill. Commissioner Laird.
Just a, just a brief comment, you know, I, that hearing we had earlier concerning the evaluation of property, truth is, I don't think the assessor is at fault, I want that to be known. What, who I think is at fault is how the state, through the Bureau of Revenue, is interpreting some of these Wyoming statutes, because I think that, that just because we have these rules that they promote, and, uh, it doesn't mean that people give up their constitutional rights, and if the state creates rules that in a way deprives people of their property without due process, I think that's the issue. And if you dream up some, some formula, so that you can evaluate two different property settings next side by side, a hundred thousand dollars apart, and how much ever taxes that involves, uh, that is an equal treatment under the law. So I think that when we send those kind of things back, I'm hoping somebody at some point will hire themselves a lawyer to go and have this tested, because it's a taking without the government pay, uh, paying the proper dues on something like that. And, and then using this Marshall and Swift computer, nobody knows what's in that, because nobody's looked into that computer. And how, how can they raise taxes without it being a legislative authority? But nobody, none of these people that come in here have the money to hire a lawyer to go check that out. So the, the first line of defense for them is this county commission. Period, the end. Thank you.
Commissioner Koch. All right, with mine, I'm gonna skip gears and request legal updates.
I thought I was forgotten again, but here we are. So, good evening, I don't have too much, we did get the preliminary plat back on Squaw Creek, and Mr. Hegler has that. And we are working on some easements, the easement for the Badwater Bridge is drafted and with the other party right now, and then will be presented to you all, and I think we've already covered that, we'll get ahold of Stu at Ameri-, I think it's American Title, that's Stu regarding title searches, and did anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? I always forget to ask that.
All right, Chris.
Oh, yeah, did you have any questions on that before passing? See, you threw me off, Dave, because you forgot me and did it out of order, so I apologize, well, okay. And we're still working with Paul regarding the scenic drive vacation, he's made progress on that as well. And then some other projects for some of our other clients, that's it, thank you.
The only comment I've got tonight is that I, with the potential transfer, um, water transfer in power down in Seminole, I think that is something that we need to look into, not only just as a commission, but also as individuals, and see what that, how that's going to affect our county, and, uh, the surrounding areas, and I plan on reaching out to our, the commissioners down in Carbon County, and, and getting some more information from them, and I'll be happy to share that at our next meeting as well, but I do think that's something that, that we need to take into consideration, especially with the short deadline that we've got for comments, uh, being in January. So, with that, I don't have anything else, so.